Are we ready Jeff? Good evening, I'd like to call this meeting of the Southwest Licking Local Board of Education to order. It is Thursday, September 16th. We are in the district meeting room and it is 7 o'clock. I'd like to recognize everyone here, thank you for coming out tonight, it's nice to see a good turnout. And I'd like to thank everyone at home for watching as well. If you all would please stand and join me in the pledge.
Good evening and please stand for the pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Jones, will you call the roll please?
Mrs. Engel.
Here.
Mrs. Moore.
Here.
Mrs. Spindler.
Here.
Mr. Zany. Mr. Vincent.
Here, a quorum is present, we will continue. Public participation, did anybody fill out a form? Thank you very much, we'll move on to adoption of the agenda.
Move to adopt agenda as printed please.
Second.
Any discussion? Alright, Mr. Jones.
Mrs. Moore.
Yes.
Mrs. Engel.
Yes.
Mrs. Spindler.
Yes.
Mr. Vincent.
Yes, the agenda is adopted, we'll move on to presentations. First we have Mr. Janelle, who will give us some updates on our construction projects. Mr. Janelle, thank you for coming.
You're welcome, thank you for having me here. Dr. Perkins asked me to put on a short presentation about how the construction project's going on and as you've been able to drive by the various sites, you've seen that a lot of things have been happening and tonight we're going to take a look at it. I could approach this presentation, I thought about it in many different ways and what I'd like to do is just kind of give you a brief update and see if you have any quick questions so that it maybe is a little more, you know, directed at maybe the focus you want to see, okay? So, obviously, we have our dedication for the elementary and also for the high school. These are some drone pictures of it. And again, there are online pictures, if you haven't been to the site or into the building to, that our architects put together and basically you can go into a particular space and kind of look in a 3D format, you can also click on the little round circles and it can kind of take you through the buildings. So, again, most of us have been there. We've also opened up our athletic facility, we've got the locker room, restroom combination there towards the back right and then of course our new bleacher section for home. So again, that's something that's up and running. So again, those three at the top, they've been substantially completed. We've opened those particular facilities but as you kind of look at that particular PowerPoint page, we see that we still have some work occurring at some of those locations. So, the Watkins Intermediate Building is going to be having its, it's really a 10 and a half month because we have a period when the students aren't going to be in but the teachers will be so we'll be able to get to most areas. We'll have that inspection on October 15th. And then the Watkins Memorial High School, it is open, functioning, as we all know, but we are still undergoing some additions. For example, the front of the building is going to get the WM, there's going to be some transitional strips that go from the terrazzo into the classroom. So there's a lot of what we call scope items that are being completed. And then there are also some items, and we can kind of get into this a little bit later, that were owner added, such as the business areas, and they're getting real near completion also. So, you'll still see people in there, we've tried to avoid interrupting the high school as best we can. We usually work with Mrs. Latowitz in terms of when we can get in, certain times if there's a, let's say there's a test ball stuck, come on in because it's going to back up the sewer. But if it's something in the middle of the commons area, we usually wait until after hours. But definitely if you've heard they're finished, they're not, there's still work occurring. The Etna Elementary and the Watkins Middle School are currently, well Watkins Middle School to be, are under renovation right now. You can see the substantial completion date, Etna Elementary's November 28th and the Watkins Middle School is July 18th and then the tentative opening days. And again, we, we hope we maintain the schedule and those dates I'm sure Dr. Perkins wants us to keep because it's kind of important to keep the shift going. Because after that, we've got the Kirkersville Elementary and that date has not been set but we are tentatively going to open that August 23rd. That's still in the process of phase submissions. And then the new elementary that you guys have elected to proceed with, that should be opening the fall of '24 if all the designs and the cost estimating and everything goes straight. So, it's finally followed by the demolition of the Watkins Middle School which would tentatively be September 24 and that would be completely up to, you know, at that particular time if you feel that's justified. Alright? Alright, this is what I was mentioning just a few seconds ago, all buildings are occupied. The intermediate building, we added some scope. We also are working and finishing up any punch items and anything that comes up, pretty much nowadays would fall underneath the one-year warranty and we're working with Robertson on calling the subcontractors to fix whatever problem happens to come up. The high school, since it's open a little more recently, there's a few more items of the basic scope to be completed and again, we've added some owner scope to it. The gyms have like the huddle camera coming now, we've got fiber that's running to the video board, we've got, like I mentioned, the transitional strips, things of that nature. So again, that particular building's in the punch and warranty issue phase and that will probably happen for the next 10, 11 months, when the 10-month cycle comes around we'll review and hopefully progress has been made on that that we can kind of pass, pass on to the next stage. The athletic field, I'm kind of looking, I'm dodging Mr. Jones's head here but I'll look at this one. All scope is not completed. I'm a little more concerned about the athletic building because there are still some showers in like the officials locker room that are not completed, locks are getting the final touch, we gotta give thanks really to Jeff Cameron who's behind me because some of that technology's kind of fallen behind and he's jumped on that, so he's there. The site, if you've been over there, there's, there's grass, rocks, kind of growing together so there's some cleanup that we have to do. So again, we're in the punch and warranty issues of that particular but it's moving a little bit slower and there'll probably be more communication about what our next steps will be for the athletic field. You can stop me at any time and ask questions or we can keep moving because I got pictures of some things too.
I have a quick question, in the athletic field, I know that we had to do a lot of showers, did the ones in the actual locker rooms get taken care of?
The locker rooms are good.
Okay.
But the, yeah, the officials are not.
Okay.
Do we have water at the soccer field yet?
There is, we have rainwater. But, the, the tower's been painted, stood upright, the well I believe was drilled, we have to run power and then we have to connect it to the existing plumbing.
Okay.
And, Mr. Jones, do you have something to add on that one at all? And that's all occurring kind of internally, I know that Kevin Paskins is also working on that, arranging, so. But, no, we just have rainwater and we've been very fortunate to have some rain to help with that.
Right.
Have we taken over the clean, I know that there was a discussion about cleaning the high school and we were working with Robertson on what they were going to be doing, have we taken that over?
The cleaning process part, yes.
Okay, what cleaning part? Well, wasn't there a discussion of them getting in and getting everything ready before our kids came in and we were saying, you know, there's such a delay that maybe we'll just take it over ourselves?
There was a little bit of that that happened.
Okay.
I mean, we had to, and Mrs. Latowitz has been very good about that, I mean, she took control of her building and along with Kevin and the maintenance and the custodial staff and everybody involved, we got that moving along. So, we got as much as we could out of the construction manager but I think in all honesty, we had to do some pushing to get things done. But, she runs a tight ship and it, we're up and running and it's clean.
How about the, I know that the business rooms, the digital art room, those computers were a problem in those, how, how close are we to getting those completed?
If I could, we're extremely close at this point. They just got the switch installed yesterday and about 4:00 we got a patch into the network. My tech was on-site this morning, confirmed that all the drops were working.
Okay.
He's getting images to the computers, they're plugging everything back in. They got help from Mr. Byd to kind of reconfigure the desks so they could actually properly hold the computers. So, we're very, very close to that being full functional. I think after Monday, we should have everything full operational.
That's one of the owner adds that we had, that's why we're in a little bit later.
I knew it was, I just wondered, you know, we're almost halfway through this semester, I just wondered if we were getting close at this point.
Along with that, at the booster meeting the other night, they were wondering about the huddle cam.
Huddle cam's out for two weeks.
And that's good, and...
At the football stadium, the inside one is part of a different PR and that is, we're working with Mr. Perkins, athletic director, in terms of the best timing to get into the gym because there'll have to be some shutdown time because there's, there's fiber that needs to be run, cat line needs to be run and it's all done way up high so we'll need to bring materials in, cover the floor and so forth.
And then wifi in the concession stand?
Just finished it this morning.
Excellent.
They did the huddle on Tuesday, the huddle cam on Tuesday. Just so I'm clear, a huddle cam is the kind that follows the ball? Is that, okay, that's what I thought it was. Thanks.
And actually, the, because of the technology out of there, again, Jeff has had to do a little bit of finagling, it was going to be on the home side and it was actually on the old home side for a period of time and we don't, are we going to make the switch this weekend or still run it one more time?
I think we're going to run it where it is right now, I haven't talked to Mr. Perkins about it, but I'm glad we're back to new.
When something's working, you kind of tend to want to leave it alone until you get a seasonal change.
I have other questions related to this and the slide before, I can wait if you want.
Well, it's, it's, it's your show, I mean...
Go ahead now, do you have more? I have one...
Is it this slide?
I just have one more, let Candy finish. The outdoor scoreboard at the first game was missing the whole center section.
They repaired it this week.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so on this slide, you probably may not be able to answer.
Do you want me to go back?
No, not this one, one before this. So I know there was a lot of concerns, issues, when we opened the new high school and took ownership in June, that was, we were supposed to have the like, I think it was June 9th or some, somewhere around that and it was delayed a week. And there was a lot of concern because we have a lot of stuff to do before school starts in August. Are we going to be alright with a July 18th ownership date for the middle school?
That's actually pushing it, pushing it up as quickly as we can. Originally, it was designed to finish in October, October doesn't work for us, so in the GMP that we developed, it says July 18th is the date. Now that's substantial completion date and again, that's just kind of an OFCC term which means that essentially the building should be in condition that the owner can use it the way it's supposed to be used. But unfortunately, we find out that there's punch list items that we get in there, like just yesterday it was called to the, the high school, new high school gym because when they tried to put all six backwards up at the same time, it blew a breaker, so they have to do it in threes. So you, you find those things and that becomes a part of the punch to be fixed.
Is there a way to negotiate partial occupancy prior to that to like at least get the administration in? I, I'm asking because I have no idea but...
Occupancy is basically something that has to be worked with the building code department but what we've tried to do in the other builds is we, we try to arrange a time that we can move equipment in or boxes into areas that, you know, the punch list are very minimal so that those items are there and I know that Mr. Jones has coordinated that with Mr. Perkins in terms of the moving team that comes in, now that may be a little bit different each one of these moves but we try to get as much in there as we possibly can. With the high school, they had to put in a DAS system which is required for full occupancy so we were able to initially start off with some office personnel, Mrs. Latowitz's office could get in, so then we pushed them, the DAS system got passed, the technology started to get raw online so we got more and more people in there and it took about a week or two extra, yes.
And I guess my, my bigger worry would be if we're going to move kids into the current middle school for the other renovations at the same time, there is no alternate, alternative, alternative for that July, like we can't say, oh, we're not ready, we'll keep middle school kids at the middle school because aren't we using the middle school for the swing space?
That won't work, if, if the middle school, for some reason, if it's not going to be ready in time to move the kids in, we'll have to back their startup.
Okay.
Because there's no, I mean, Kirkers has to get going, we can house all of the, all the teachers that are moving, all their belongings as well as all the stuff coming in at the middle school and we have a plan for that while we're waiting but we will not be able to collect both the middle school and Kirkersville in the middle school, that will never work.
There's actually a plan that's been developed so that when Kirkersville moves over, a lot of the items are set up for middle school kids, that there has to be a period of time to get in there and adjust it for the lower level kids.
Right.
So, it's exactly right here.
Okay, and then my other question was related to the owner slide that you were on before I stopped you or whatever.
This one?
Yes, and this is not, this is just something I've heard in the community that it may be a need and I didn't know if there had been any discussion and maybe Mrs. Latowitz can contribute, but boxes of some sort over some of the buttons in the classrooms so that they aren't accidentally pushed or purposely pushed?
If you're talking about the gas shut offs, that's, that's in progress, yes.
Okay.
There was a couple of problems with the gas shut off, at first it, when it was pushed, it actually triggered a fire alarm for the fire department which was shocking to the teachers, I believe, and the staff. So they're in the process of having a local alarm put over so that the teachers can hear that somebody's pushed the button but it also sends it down to the alarm panel in her office but it doesn't call the fire department anymore. And we're also putting covers over a lot of the iPads that are on the walls and in the athletic room because actually the athletic building already had one of its controller pads ripped off the wall at one of the events, so we're, we're in the process of fixing that. And it's, and it works, it's, it's back together, we're just getting them covered.
Okay.
Okay, alright, so, real quickly, another particular topic that, that I've been working with people with is the actual site work. So you may be asking what's still happening out there at the site. At the entrance, that, that still has to have that little median, there's, there's plant life, there's trees that go on the outside, if you've driven in, you've seen the large rock where the dedication, or not dedication, thanking plant, clap, or whatever you guys named it, but thank you for, for the land purchase.
Yeah, it's nice.
So that area's number one. Area number two, if you look to the right as you go down more your way, there's a lot of dirt, there's what seems to be a nice geese pond and then some area that's not been developed at all. What they need to do, this is the last phase, is they'll go into the middle area with the pond, they'll drain that, then they're going to take all the soil that's been collected during the building process, put it over on the spot at the south, grow grass there but as they have drained that, they're going to put like a farming field, they're going to put tile in there to collect the water. Then that dirt that's piled up at the top arrow will be pushed over that and grass would be grown and hopefully it keeps down the amount of water in that area and also keeps down then the geese in the particular area. That's all been planned. Area three, just so you know, there's a paint shortage for yellow paint, so we painted the middle line white, it's been put on there very lightly so when yellow's actually obtainable, it's going to be changed over to yellow. We worked with Deputy Brill saying, should we go white, should we go yellow and, and yellow really is the middle, so we need to keep our drivers right in the middle. Area four up there, it's just pointing out that, you know, we had a site survey done by the architects the other day, there's supposed to be per square foot so much grass and things like that, if you walk into certain areas, it looks very nice, other areas look like, there needs to be a few more pieces of grass growing. So, we're in the process of doing that, okay?
That was nice.
So that's all site work. Etna Elementary, again's a renovation, couple major changes, the green areas, the red areas, the red areas are the classroom changes. If you remember, the special needs classrooms were right on the left side, which would be the south side and those rooms had those little storage closets broken up, they became full-size rooms and as you come into the main entrance, go by the office, to the right, we've added some special needs classrooms with restrooms, we also added a, another kindergarten room with restrooms, with a restroom. And again, the count is about six classrooms per grade level. The green areas will be new because you'll see pictures as we go forward, that's the cafeteria in the upper left and then dead center is the library. So, with those changes I just mentioned, all of this is also happening, thanks to you guys and Dr. Perkins and Mr. Jones for approving all the alternates that go into that particular building. So, we take a look, this will be a, a drawing by the architects, we're changing the brown look to a much brighter silver look and then again, it's, I think it's going to make it look real nice because those gutters and downspoutings have always been a eyesore for me.
Yes.
This is showing you the, this is actually no longer the bus loop, it's the front drop-off area for parents. This is the new water line being put in, that big area out front was a water pit, we had to work with the water department on that. Oop, too fast, this is one of the new windows, again, that's the color so the gutters, downspoutings will become that color to match. This is a classroom, we didn't replace all the cabinetry, we placed countertops throughout the, the area, if you're looking at the floor too, you start to see that the floor matches the countertops and then there's a solid section where the kids hang up their coats and things. HVAC, no longer will it just be a two-pipe system, so we'll be moving into a little bit more elaborate, more reliable system. And that was a main focus of the building, believe it or not, you'll see units on the top, that building was very moist or hot or cold, never really quite right, now it's going to have new system. This is outside of every single classroom, it ties in with the, the mechanical space down there by the kitchen and also the units on the roof. So it's, it's, it's very nice. This is the new library look, this is one angle, this would be another angle, so I'll go back just, because if you looked at the circle, you're thinking that's the teacher desk but that's actually kind of in the middle of the library and you can see the old teacher desk off to the left. So all of that's being done, some contours, designs, things like that being put in there. But one of the things, and you asked this John, I mean Mr. Vincent, about these projects, because they're renovation, a lot of things stay, so we feel that we're on a better pace than everything coming in especially because of the long lead items. But still, we may encounter something that slows us down. This is the kitchen, I told, or I mean, I'm sorry, the dining area, I told you there's a little change off to the left, you see that block, that's part of the new four-pipe system area, not accessible by the kids but then you can see the new floor colorings going down in the dining area. Moving to Watkins renovation because I know I'm going past my 10 minutes, major changes there, restroom up at the top, down by the locker rooms and the music rooms and things of that nature, the boys restroom in the middle by the, the dining area was moved over across from the other girls area, you can see the red arrows are showing in the middle hallway, the library jets out, now at the bottom there are new cross hallways.
Quick question.
Yep.
Are there going to be more restrooms?
There's more restrooms because that one up at the top, yes. And they'll all be revitalized, so hopefully they don't break down every other day and the plumbing is, is, is good too. So there are, there's significant changes, I think, again to the board, the voters, everybody else, all of these alternates are being approved to take place in that particular building, so they'll be massive, this is probably going to be the most different looking building on the inside with all the renovations. It's just, a lot of the walls were temporary walls and they've been knocked out, so I want to show you pictures, these are even more, see, you get a lot of things. Real quick, too fast, that's the old office. This is another angle from the office, being blown out, you can see more X's on the wall are going to disappear. The auditorium doesn't have its seats anymore, it's a lot smaller than I thought, going in there without the equipment. So it gives you a couple of different angles, this is what was originally the band room, I guess, and we had some other classes in there, that's back behind the auditorium so a lot of change is happening there, sorry. This is where the boys restroom's going to go, this is with boys restroom, looking at the cafeteria, give you a different perspective. The cafeteria dining area, I should say, is being blown out, so those rooms are going to be connected, up towards the bottom here, those little orange little squares on the floor, that's the old, where the stalls were for the bathroom, the boys bathrooms, it gives you an idea what's being changed, this is a different angle. Now, this is showing you the main hallway, you see the library now jetting out into the main hallway which accommodates hallways back behind them. So this will be the new front to the library, oop, too fast, and this is a shot from the other end down by the steps looking back to see how that jets out there. So again, and you think it's going to, you know, clog up that path but again, there's side hallways and this is kind of getting into that area, you're going to start seeing areas that run parallel to the, you know, east to west. Oop, too fast, this is another hallway, again, you see classrooms, things being modified, lots of rooms blown out, walls, again, all going back up in a little different fashion. So that brings me to the final end, again, this was just so I wouldn't have to go all the way back to the beginning in case you had a question, but a lot of things happening, apologize for going a little longer but I want to make sure we, we answer your questions if there's anything else you'd like to ask.
I have one more question. I didn't see it on that list of new middle school stuff and maybe it's because the list was really long and I didn't read...
I could have gone really fast with something.
Are we doing something to treat the outside, to get rid of that black, stripey yuck stuff that you can see from the athletic, are we fixing that?
We are attempting to fix that, that has to do with actually stuff coming off the roof and that's a kind of a block that maybe absorbs things like that. That particular building, the gutters actually go back inside the building, it's till then, so there's been a lot of water problems, so we're trying to fix all of that but then there's going to be a power wash of the outside of the building.
I knew we've had ongoing issues and we've tried different things, I just didn't know if we'd gotten some magical expert to come in and say, this is how you do it.
We're hoping German and Miller is that magical hand that says, okay, this is how we can fix this.
Because it's, it's just always that eyesore when you're at it, at an athletic event, you look over and you're like, oh.
Yes.
But anyway.
We're, we're attempting to.
We were able to get both the alternates for the bleachers then?
We got east and west.
Good, fantastic.
Will they have handicapped, accessible rails?
Everything is supposed to be handicapped accessible, yes.
Yay!
Should be the biggest middle school gym in Licking County.
Biggest middle school gym in central Ohio.
And it's getting a new floor.
Really?
Yep, auditorium's getting sanded, painted, new seats, new lighting, thanks to your, the administration, you guys' vote.
Thank you.
Thank you for your report, appreciate it. Alright, we now have a presentation from Dr. Perkins.
Okay, so let's talk about COVID a little. I wanted to update everybody kind of on what's going on in the district, take a look at our numbers, talk about kind of where we're at and look at some trends as well. So, the first slide, this is data that's provided weekly to the district from the health department, now we're always a week behind, they provide the data, so we're looking at the previous week. So if you look on the left-hand side at the top, the blue is reflecting upon how many cases for our students we have and the orange is community and then the total on the bar graph is obviously how many cases we have total. So, the, well, let me go to the bottom corner first and I'll come back to the red. So the bottom corner shows by week, obviously starting in January, so at week, see, I can't see her, I can't, hang on, let me pull it up on my computer so I can see better, you don't have to be involved.
So these are last year's?
So you're looking at, no, you're, you're currently looking at, the red, the red is the only thing that signifies last year.
Okay.
So let me first talk about this year and, well, some is last year too. So, the orange and blue is this current school year, okay, by week. And then down below, on the graph on the bottom right-hand corner, that's by week, the threshold, that is how many total cases we had during the same week last year, okay? And then, when you go to the right, school cases is how many we currently have, other would be in our community and then total is where we're at as a whole. So, if, as you can see, a couple, you know, when we, in the early parts of school, we didn't have that many, we were under last week's threshold and then we get into school here and we're quickly surpassing last year's threshold, which is one of the things that the health department is concerned about, that we are, we are higher although numbers are low, we are still trending at a higher rate than this time last year. So that's the graph on the bottom, they provide for us, so we have an idea of, you know, doing a comparison from last year to this year. So if you look at the red, okay, the red line is last year's data. So I think the important thing to notice is that on weeks 47, 48, which is Thanksgiving, heading into December, that is when we peaked the highest. So that is something that, you know, we'll have to watch, the health department will be watching, we'll be looking very closely at because, you know, that's what happened last year. It doesn't mean that's going to be the same trajectory this year but we'll have to see how things go. So this is provided to the district each week so we can kind of take a look at where we're at in comparison, comparison to last year. One important thing to note is that the health department's data may be a little bit different than what you would see on the website because they only, they only take a look at the cases that are confirmed in their system. So we oftentimes as a district, get positive cases from our families and so we do process those to keep kids safe and we do quarantine based on those but that is slightly different than the health department's numbers. Now I will say, they are significantly ahead this year than they were last year, some of their responsibilities were given to the Ohio Department of Health so they're able to focus on this, so they are keeping up, so we're finding that our numbers are closer than we were last year when we were working together.
And they eventually get what we get anyway?
They do, we, we give them everything, yes. Okay, so then to give you an idea, so, that, August 29th, that would be currently, as it currently stands, our peak in positives. that would be currently, as it currently stands, our peak in positive cases in the district, which would have been 1.13% of our student population. So I wanted to kind of show you. And as you can see, we are headed down currently. We hope we remain that way. That would have also been the peak of our district quarantine students, which was, oops, sorry, I'm trying to click my own. There you go. 7.65%. So at that time, that was our district average, and that is when our middle school was over 15, almost 16% of the kids, which is when I recommended for them to be put in masks. We were seeing a high number of cases, as well as a lot of kids in quarantine, and I'll show that data in a second. I will say that our middle school kids were masked on that Thursday, and that following Tuesday, the health commissioner did call and recommend a mask mandate at the middle school, which I said, well, I already did that on Thursday, and he said that was great. So he is also watching that data to kind of keep tabs on individual districts and then making recommendations based on what he's seeing. Do you have a question?
Do you want me to ask in the middle, or do you want me to wait to the end?
Let me, do you mind if I do it all? That way, it might, because it might come up, I'm thinking. Okay. So this just gives you an idea. If we're looking at individual weeks, these are new positive cases. So as you can see, we are going significantly down. We have 10 new positive cases at the start of this week, and 12 new quarantines, which is significantly different from, if you look back a couple of weeks, where obviously the concern was coming, what brought upon the middle school masking with the 360 quarantines. Now, were those all middle school kids? No, but there was significantly the most kids at the middle school. So this is our current dashboard as of 3 o'clock today. This dashboard does update every hour automatically. And I will tell for those in here listening, and those at home, I've had some parents reach out and say, the dashboard's not updated. Sometimes if you keep a link on your phone, you have to log back out and log back in, refreshing doesn't always work. So it is an automatic system. It should say at the bottom, you'll see exactly when it's updated, not on my slide, but if you're online. So it is automatically updated. So this is currently, as of 3 o'clock today, what we're looking at as far as cumulative cases in our district, 31 students, three staff. Sometimes I hear people say, well, I know, you know, I heard this person, or, well, if we don't have a confirmed case, if we don't have positive proof of that COVID, that does not go on the dashboard. We ask for that, and when we get that, then we add it into our numbers. And/or if the health department contacts us first with that positive case, then it goes on to our dashboard. And then, I know this is tiny to see, but this is just a breakdown by buildings. As you can currently see, the most confirmed cases currently cumulatively is at the intermediate. Mind you, this is 10 days worth of every, you know, the kids will drop off after 10 days, because your quarantine period is for 10 days. So that's how long they stay on the dashboard, and then the kids will come and go as they're out of quarantine, they're off their positive case. So right now, the intermediate has the most cases in the district. And then this is our current percentage of total quarantine students, 2.36. You can see the numbers reflectant below of how many kids at each building. And one thing to point out, and for those that look at this dashboard and, you know, keep track of things, sometimes what can be deceiving is currently at our middle school, for example, we have 40 students quarantined. While only 30 of those students have been quarantined by the district, 10 of those are self-quarantined. So possibly, they have a case in their home, or the child was exposed somewhere else that has nothing to do with the school. But we put all of that information in there, so everybody knows and sees how many kids are currently out in school and what our percentage is. Okay, so that's the last slide. I did want to add a couple of things, and then I'll take questions, and I'd be happy to answer those as well. A couple of things to just note. The health commissioner called me again this morning to continue to say that our middle school is one of the highest rates of cases that they're seeing in the county, and he would continue with that mask mandate for now. So although we're 37 cases two weeks ago, 37 last week, he kind of wants to see a few weeks more of data and see the trajectory go down before he would recommend removing that mask mandate. So that's kind of where we're at currently with that. I think that might be it. So what questions do you guys have about any of those slides? And I can pull it back up if you need.
Nope. You were right. It was answered in a following. I think it's helpful to know that it may say 4.3%, but when you look at that in a number, I mean, when the middle school was at the highest, I was blown away when I saw 173 kids in quarantine. That's like a lot. It's like half of a whole class. I mean, the whole class of 20, 30, whatever they are, 20, 28, you know?
I do think we have seen an increase in kids choosing to wear a mask. I also think we've, parents are doing a good job of erring on a side of precaution, keeping kids home if they are sick. I think that's helping things tremendously, because with the cases we do have, we are having to quarantine less and less kids. So that's a positive reflection on what's going on at home as well, which is definitely helping the schools. And obviously, the mask mandate at the middle school did help that situation, and it helped things to start settling down. So hopefully, we'll see the numbers continue to go down, and then we'll be able to talk at some point about lifting that mandate when we get to that place. Other questions?
I'd also say I think our student athletes have done a good job, too, of, once they realized, you know, you could be quarantined, and I think they've come a long way with that. So I think they've stepped up, as far as that goes, because they want to keep playing, obviously. And so that worked. I have a couple of questions. Do you guys have any questions yet, or?
Yeah, go ahead.
So if a kid tests positive on a home test and they report it to us, is that considered, is a home test considered legit?
So we just received this week, and we need to get communication out, which we've included in the quarantine letter. So if a child was to be quarantined, they're going to know about them, but just in general. So we do have test home kits from Licking Memorial that do count. So if you do the test where you have the one-on-one, you know, with the nurse, and you follow that protocol, then we can accept those. But we can't just accept the ones that you just do them on your own without having that guidance in step, and then they're able to send an email with that information. So we have quite a few that will house at each school from the hospital, and then parents whose kids are in quarantine will be able to pick one up if they would like from the school.
Is it, sorry, it was an addition to that question. Is there a timeframe after being exposed to be able to take the test for it to count?
The fifth, you can take it after the fifth day, and then you can return on day eight.
So that's for if you're quarantined. But let's say you're a kid and you're sick, and you have a home test says that you have it. The home test tests positive, but you don't go to CVS or wherever to get, do we count that?
We do not.
Okay.
The health department won't allow us to count that, and we don't count that, because we've had people call, and they said they've had a home test and it was positive. And then, you know, we encourage them to go get, you know, tests somewhere else. Then they go to CVS and they call back, well, now it's negative. So we're just finding them to be a tad bit unreliable. The ones that are, you know, if we had one of the legitimate ones, we would count it. So to clarify, if it's a home test that's done with the nurse, like you're supposed to do, then we would count those. But there are some that are not like that. So it does get a little confusing.
Okay. Two more things. I know some of the quarantining, especially with the middle school, after we went to the mask mandate, was a result of lunch. Are we doing anything at lunchtime to remedy that, to lessen exposure, so that we have less kids in quarantine?
I know Mr. Ball is working to get kids out after 15. I know it's not always possible.
Okay.
So I know there's encouragement to mask back up, but that is still one of our issues, is the lunchroom.
Okay. And then finally, with the middle school mandate, our protocol to lift the mandate was?
We're looking for our cases to be less than the average of the district, both for quarantining, which we're fine right now as far as that's concerned, but also the number of cases. And then the second tier would be, at the time when I put our kids into mask at the middle school, I did not do that based on the recommendation of the health department. I did it based on data. So now, since the health department has called and has recommended it, that we be in mask, and again, called this morning and said, continue with mask, that would probably be another added thing that I'll work with them when they're recommending, along with when I see the numbers fall below.
Okay. So once we hit the mark or the protocol where we would have done away with the mandate, do we still have to listen to the health department, or can we?
We can choose not to listen to the health department. I mean, that would probably not be my recommendation, because I feel like, you know, I put the mandate in place on that Thursday based on what I was seeing, which obviously was the right thing to do, because that Tuesday, then, they said the same thing. So I feel like they're looking at the data, we're looking at the data. I would feel more confident and comfortable going with the recommendation, but obviously, you know, I can present that to you guys and then.
Okay. I'm just curious, because I know we, you know, we put out to the public what our threshold was. And I feel like if we meet that threshold, I think, you know, I personally believe local control is the best control. So once we hit that bar, I'd like to have a discussion.
Absolutely.
I also believe that if we hit that bar, I don't think that they're going to say they'll be fine. I mean.
Yeah, they're looking more at the trends of how many total cases, and then are we going down? Or, you know, like this week, when we talked to him again, we're looking at the week prior, he's saying, you know, you're still going up. So he's looking at the flat number, and you're still headed this way. So next, this week, this week's data should be better, based on what we have. It should be better.
All right. Anyone else?
Okay, that's it for me.
Okay. We're gonna move on to requests to speak on agenda items. And I would say, you know, we just all sat through this COVID conversation and the report. And, you know, we know that people, when they sign up, they, you let us know what you want to speak about. And I will say, you know, some of these, I don't know if you're for masks or against masks, but I'll say, we've been getting a lot of communication from both sides of the issue. But I appreciate you guys coming out in person and talking to us tonight. So thank you for that. And with that said, does any other board member have anything they want to say before we get started with that? No? Okay, with that said, our first speaker is James, James Pigler. However, he is not here tonight due to an emergency. So we did, he did send us a statement that we are going to read. But before we get into this, and I just want to remind you all that, as we do at every board meeting, we will be following Robert's rules. When asked to speak, please state your name, address, and any group affiliation and topic you wish to discuss. When called upon, please be respectful of the board and to the people in attendance. No profanity, please. You have five minutes to speak to the board. This is your five minutes. I'll give you a signal when you're at four minutes, and we'll have a little buzzer, not a buzzer, but we'll have a timer on the screen as well, when you're at four minutes, and then I'll ask you to make your closing remarks. Please address the board as a whole and not one specific individual. Additionally, we ask that you don't single out staff or children. Please listen to all commenters and don't engage in cross-debate. The board will not reply or respond. Again, this is your time to speak to the board. We may take notes, but we don't respond. This is your time to talk to us and to give us your input. The board recognizes and honors free speech. However, we are conducting business. We are respectful and courteous to everyone in the room, and we expect the same. So we're looking forward to hearing what everyone has to say. So without any further ado, Mr. Pigler's comment will be read by Mr. Jones. So Mr. Jones, and Mr. Cameron, if you could still run the clock, because in terms of fairness, he does get five minutes, and if it goes beyond that, then he'll just have to submit it in the next meeting. Go ahead.
Yep. So this is from James Pigler, 137 Brendan Park Drive, Edno, Ohio. He goes, good evening. Please allow me to introduce myself. My name is James Pigler. I am a new resident to Southwest Licking, as my family and I just moved to the area a little over two years ago. I am a 15-year combat veteran of the US Marine Corps and US Army, having obtained the rank of Chief Warrant Officer II as an Apache helicopter pilot at the end of my service. I eventually held a short career in law enforcement prior to accepting a career in the energy industry. My children both attend Watkins Middle School. We became proud Warrior fans very quickly after locating to the area from Western Pennsylvania. When attending our first open house at both the elementary and middle school, my wife and I were overly impressed with the quality of educators, as well as the patriotism shown in the classrooms of Watkins School System. Being a combat veteran in prior law enforcement, my children being taught to appreciate and reflect the freedoms that we are blessed with, in their country, our constitution, and the freedom to express diversity of thought and opinion is very important in regard to our children's education. We felt the school district's response to the pandemic last year was mostly justified. COVID was new and not well-understood. We all watched as the government contradicted itself on an almost continual basis while making decisions as to what would protect us. We progressed through the summer knowing that the number of cases would decrease in warm weather. We also knew that these cases would increase again in the fall and into the winter months, as is typical with every single other infectious disease to date. What I do want, what I do not want to do is provide school board a list of arguments as to why the majority of district parents don't agree with masking our children. I am sure that we were all aware of the conflicting studies, reports, and hard data. Unless we truly haven't paid attention, we are fully aware of the studies showing the effect of brain function by introducing slight hypoxia in children via masks from increased CO2 levels. We also have read the studies showing decreased immune system due to our children not being exposed to various bacteria and ailments that build a strong immune response. My point is not to agree or disagree with the various opinions or studies. My point is, as educated people, at this point, we all pause instead of making knee-jerk reactions as a national scale to increased mandates that are questionable at best. I truly appreciate the board's position in navigation, navigating the threats from higher governments for non-compliance, and also in favor of the families of the Southwest Licking Local School District. The bureaucracy makes it so complicated to raise any type of objection, or just to even pause and to question what is effective. There is narrative in this country that if we even question the narrative from above, we are in the wrong and thus risk losing our positions. Continuing educators such as yourselves, I mean, concerning educators such as yourself, I certainly understand that the risk of not being able to affect good outcomes in school due to arguing against half-thought-out mandates is difficult to fully weigh out. I will close with this. I deployed and fought for my country for 15 years. I am willing to give my position as a father to my kids, a husband to my wife, and up to, including my life, for what I consider to be morally correct. I am willing to sacrifice all of this for the citizens of this country and our amazing high quality of life, but also for the citizens of countries who have suffered beyond comprehension. Yes, I am willing to give my life for those foreign citizens if necessary. What we have in our country today is non-representive of a free society. People who simply question narrative, risk career destruction, and lose the ability to provide for their families. This is wrong on so many levels, and should anger all of us Americans. Obviously, I understand the board's position in the middle school of this and desire to ensure that children of district continue to receive in-person learning. I believe that we can all agree that remote learning is nearly, not nearly as effective for the proper education development of our children. With this being said, I again revert back to ultimate sacrifice I am willing to make during my military career. I simply ask the board to willing to make sacrifices not nearly as severe for the sake of the families for the school district. I ask you all to make decisions that are reasonable, solidified, and common sense, and doesn't harm our children for the sake of appeasing the narrative and the bureaucracy that we all are seeing. I beg you, fight for the good fight where you can, continuing to allow exemptions for those parents who personal religious beliefs or medical concerns regarding masks and vaccines don't align with a national narrative. I truly believe this is a great American community with outstanding educators.
Mr. Jones, thank you. Anything left? I'm sure.
About a half a paragraph, so.
Any board member could read, and if Mr. Pigler wants to come next month to speak, he's more than welcome to. So we now have Mr. Salie, please. Mr. Salie, please.
Good evening. My name's Justin Sally. My address is, that's okay, 250 Key Boulevard, Pataskala. I have never done this before, so I figured it would be best for me to just write down everything I wanted to say and just kind of read it off the paper. So I spent a couple hours writing my thoughts down, and just figured I'd read it off here. So anyhow, first of all, I'd like to thank you for keeping our kids in school this year and last year. That was very, very important, and I'm glad that was done. I'm here tonight to publicly let you know that I strongly oppose any future facial covering requirement in our schools. Recently, there has been a big push from the governor to have all the schools implement. to have all the schools implement a facial, facial covering policy. Not all schools are going to do this and there are some that don't require them on the bus, as I don't think we should. I've been dropping my son off and picking him up every day because of that, uh, requirement. When I was in school, science was my favorite subject, at least until the COVID appeared. There are a lot of COVID-related measures being recommended that don't follow common sense or science. I believe that politicians and science do not go together. There's an article on the National Institute of Health, the NIH, from 2013 about facial expressions during student learning. It was determined that facial expression was the most important non-verbal mode of communication. It also found that facial expression greatly helps the teacher identify how well the students are learning the material. I can send you this article if you would like. It is actually pretty interesting. We have no idea what the impact of children forced to wear these things years from now, but I don't think it could be a good thing. Yesterday, I looked on the school COVID dashboards in some of the surrounding districts that have mandated the facial coverings in school and the percent positive was higher than our district. I don't know for sure why this is being pushed so hard, but it is not about our children's health and I can prove that and can explain more if you wish. Even if it seems that some have lost their mind with COVID, it doesn't mean that we have to. This is not a political statement for me. As a matter of fact, I'm a Libertarian Party supporter. I care about the kids and strongly believe that the facial coverings are not good for them to maintain good health, mental health. I urge you to continue to let the parents make the choices for what is best for their children's mental health. Thank you and thanks for serving our community.
Thank you, Justin.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. And if we could just refrain from the clapping, that would be awesome just for the decorum of our meeting. I appreciate it. Next, we have, Ms. Lacy, did I say your name properly? All right. Thank you very much and welcome. Um, you'll have five minutes as well. Thank you.
Thank you. My name is Kelly Lacy. I reside at 8661 Blacks Road, Southwest Pataskala, Ohio. Good evening. I would like to start by saying thank you for making masks optional for most part so far this year. I'm here today to be a voice not only for my children, but every child in our district and to beseech you to keep masks optional indefinitely, including on the buses. Masks simply are not good for children to be wearing for long periods of time for health, mental, and psychological reasons. In July, a top-rated peer-reviewed journal, JAMA Pediatrics, reported that children forced to wear masks leads to adverse health effects. Their study showed that wearing masks increases the amount of carbon dioxide, CO2, in inhaled air to unhealthy levels. The study measured CO2 levels in children ages six to 17 while wearing masks. The normal content in the air is 400 parts per million, with anything above 2,000 being considered unsafe. The study measured averages of over 13,000 parts per million of CO2 in the inhaled air of the children, which is six times higher than the unsafe threshold. This was after three minutes of wearing a mask. There are countless other reports and studies that show the same thing. Our children's little bodies are still developing physically, emotionally, and psychologically. We have absolutely no way of knowing the long-term effects these masks and restrictions are gonna have on the individuals we're supposed to protect. According to the CDC's own data tracker, as of today, the total death rate was 1.6%. Now factor in the false positives due to faulty testing that couldn't differentiate between the common cold, flu, and COVID as admitted by the FDA and the CDC, and that 1.6% is even lower. In a data report by the American Academy of Pediatrics as of September 9th, nearly 5.3 million children in the US have tested positive since the onset of COVID. They also report that less than 0.03% of all child COVID cases resulted in death. Your own COVID dashboard shows all kinds of numbers except the most important ones. How about showing how many of those quarantined students actually had or even came down with symptoms? How many of those that tested positive were actually sick? Other good info would be how many students or staff have died from COVID? If you don't know those numbers, then you should, and it should be listed on your dashboard as well because it's very pertinent information. Excessive quarantines and masks are negatively impacting students' quality of education. School functions and fun activities that are a normal part of school-age years are almost obsolete. Our kids deserve better from us. Our children's lives are being completely disrupted because grown people are asleep at the wheel. There should be no more masks and no more excessive quarantining for healthy children, period. Every single one of us has the power to make a difference right here at home. Many of you can see that our country is going to hell in a handbasket and while there's a whole lot that is out of our control, we absolutely can do our part right here in our own community. It is our responsibility and duty to stand up for ourselves, but most importantly, for our children. If anyone thinks this is gonna go away, they're naive. It's not gonna disappear. We can't stop living or live in fear over a virus with a 99% survival rate. The masks and quarantines are doing more harm than good and our children's lives and quality of education have suffered long enough. I'm here standing today to say enough is enough. I hope that every other parent will choose to take the same stance. Children don't have the mental capacity to understand what's going on, but you all most certainly should. I pray that each of you school board members will use conviction, morals, and good old-fashioned common sense when making decisions that affect our children's wellbeing and education on every level and not allow them to be based on money, fear, intimidation, bias science, the media, or even the popular vote. If you don't have the courage to stand up and do what's best for these kids, I know parents that will gladly fill the seats that you currently have the privilege to be sitting in. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, then we have Ms. Frazier. Tabitha Frazier? Okay. Next, we have the Teamsters Local 413. None? Southwest Licking Education Association. None? All right, we are moving on to Agenda Item 4, Approval of Minutes.
Move Approval of 4A. Second?
Any discussion? Mr. Jones?
Mrs. Moore?
Yes.
Mrs. Spindler?
Yes.
Mrs. Engel?
Yes.
Mr. Vincent?
Yes, that passes. We'll move on to the financial report. You know, motion to, um, approve?
So moved.
I'll second that.
Includes the executive summary for August 31st, 2021. Again, we don't have estimates. Those will be working and they will definitely be in place for next month's board meeting. A couple key points, we received our final property tax settlements from Fairford County and Licking County and they are about 13% higher than they were last year. It's right along with the 22% increase split at half, we, you know, ballpark very close. So, uh, that's right where we expect to be at, at this time of year. Expense-wise, we're running well. I mean, we're actually a little bit below where we were last year at this time. So, revenue higher, expenses lower. That's always a good thing at this point. So, I'll be glad to answer any questions you have.
Fairly routine month.
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Jones?
Mrs. Engel?
Yes.
Mr. Vincent?
Yes.
Mrs. Moore?
Yes.
Mrs. Spindler?
Yes.
Okay, that passes. We now will move on to the personnel consent calendar. I believe we can take all of these together.
Motion to approve 6A through H.
Second.
Any discussion? Anything, Dr. Perkins? Nope?
I don't think so.
Okay, Mr. Jones?
Mrs. Spindler?
Yes.
Heard Mrs. Moore first. So, Mrs. Moore?
Yes.
Mrs. Engel?
Yes.
Mr. Vincent?
Yes, that passes. We'll move on to business item. I believe we need to take all of these individually.
Well, you take them all together. It's up to you. You can, um, it's up to you, your preference, your personal preference.
I guess we could take them all together.
Discuss them each, yeah.
All right, you guys make the motion.
I'll move Approval 7A through C. Second?
Okay, discussion.
I have to talk about policies, Rick, or, yeah, you want me to do that, or? Are you talking about policies or am I?
I mean, most of them, again, we don't have a whole lot, just typical policies from OSBA changes. Um, I don't think anything I can think of that stands out. Do you think of anything?
They're pretty minor.
One thing that wasn't OSBA that we add in this time deals with purchasing policy. Our federal purchasing policy is different than our local purchasing policy. So, we're trying to, we want to bring those online. So, what we requested, um, part of this first reading is our purchasing policy is to change it from $5,000, individual item, $5,000 or more, three quotes. The federal purchasing policy, anything over $10,000, you have to get two quotes. So, there's a difference there. So, we want to move it somewhere, any expenditure over $10,000 in total. We need at least two quotes. So, they align. There's no confusion about, you know, with this for the federal expenditure, but it meets the 5,000, so we only, but, so it's, it's confusing. We want to get them both aligned, so that's the one thing we added there. Three questions on that. Do you want to do any of the policies there and that?
Okay.
Do a handbook?
And then, um, I'm gonna have, um, Mrs. Lotowitz talk about the addendum to the high school handbook.
Okay.
If that's okay?
Yes.
Okay. Yep, if you don't mind using the mics, people can hear you. That'd be great. Thank you.
Hi, folks. Um, so, we are recommending two modifications to the high school handbook. The first relates to academic honors. Previously, the handbook articulated the criteria for valedictorian and salutatorian, and we are recommending some changes to that. And I'll, I'll kind of take the changes as a whole. The handbook currently does not articulate, um, what we consider the, the academic awards or academic recognitions that we, that we award kids in the spring. So, what we are proposing is to kind of clarify, um, those awards and honors, um, in, in the handbook. As a part of, of clarifying those awards and honors, we are establishing kind of three levels of academic awards. Summa cum laude, which would be students who have earned a 4.0 or higher. Magna, which is 3.7 to 3.99, um, and then cum laude, which is 3.4 to 3.69. We've had the magna and the cum laude in place previously, but we've never articulated summa cum laude. How this relates to valedictorian and salutatorian is that, um, we are proposing that instead of establishing a, a, a kind of a ranking system that we've had in place previously for salutatorian being the highest GPA, uh, or sorry, valedictorian being the highest GPA, salutatorian being the second highest, our proposal is that any student who achieves a GPA of 4.0 or higher after eight semesters of high school be awarded the distinction of valedictorian. Our rationale for that is that, um, it is, it is a more inclusive, um, way of, of honoring kids and it allows each student to set individual goals for achievement rather than, um, having a competitive field for those top honors. Our second, um, recommendation, um, to, to alter the handbook or to modify the handbook relates to, um, homeschool and how homeschool grades are, um, recorded. This is an area that's not been previously addressed in the handbook, but our proposal is that homeschool students should receive pass fail grades for their completed, transcribed coursework. That just kind of clarifies our process, um, so that everybody's on the same page and so that when we have individual, you know, homeschool kids transferring in, we're not having to go back and think, okay, how do we do this? This is just kind of clarifying what we're already doing.
I have a question. Do you happen to know the numbers, like, let's say, just last year? If we were to, uh, go in this direction with the valedictorian, how many students would have reached that level?
My guess is 10, 10 to 15.
Okay. And that's like probably the average-ish?
I think that's probably the average.
Yeah, I'm a total no on this. I think it's, I think it's a watered-down participation trophy feel of valedictorian and salutatorian. I think valedictorian and salutatorian are first and second in the class. I think you've, you're, I think that's what those are. I, I don't think you water that down by handing that distinction to eight, 10, 12 kids. Because the kids still get their transcript and they still know where they are.
Okay.
So.
I have a couple of questions myself for you. How long have we had the ranking system we're using now?
Probably forever.
Okay, so, this would be something completely new. We haven't done like pieces of it earlier or anything like that?
That is correct.
No, we've had in the past, we've had multiple valedictorians in the past.
We've had the, the, like, the grade, the GPA distinctions at the end of the school year for each grade level, if I'm not mistaken. So, in the past, I know kids have gotten a little card with maybe a pin, uh, that would, like, if they, a bronze, silver, gold.
Bronze, silver, and gold.
If they reached one of these GPAs, but I don't think that they, I think the point maybe is that they're, they were never distincted or outlined as such in the actual handbook.
That is correct.
And we also didn't have that lower, that, that one level.
We haven't put the highest level.
Highest level.
And, and the magna cum laude and the cum laude have always been presented to the class, or the seniors with chords. It's just she, they're adding summa cum laude for any kids over 4.0 with an additional whatever chord or whatever.
We've had multiple valedictorians in the past and we, there was times we had an eight, nine, and then we went away from it.
And am I correct that this is kind of a trend in other districts?
That is correct. Many districts are, are moving to a more inclusive approach or a top 10, um, where they don't even grant a title of a valedictorian. It's a, like a decam decorum or something like that.
Do we know in Licking County has this?
I was unable to.
Okay.
I, I will.
But then don't call it that.
Well, a lot of colleges are going through upper-class rankings.
Yeah, don't, don't call it that then.
I guess my other question, I'm kind of torn here for two reasons. Number one, um, I don't necessarily believe everybody gets a cookie all the time, but I do like the fact that we are recognizing more kids. So, my question is, could we keep this with the summa, magna, and cum, but still include the valedictorian and the salutator? I mean.
Like what you were, like a combination between the valedictorian, top two, and then the others? Be what the deca, whatever you just said?
Well, yeah, they would. I mean, you can leave the graduation honors. If you get over a 4.0, you get three chords and the magna cum laude get a white chord or whatever. I mean, you can, yeah.
Plus.
I guess.
No, go ahead.
I'm sorry. I guess my struggle would be, let's say, and I, I'm, I'm not sure that this is ever how it happens, but let's say you have a student who has made straight A's their whole entire lives and they take, um, AP, AP, honors, 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 and they do really bad their junior year and get a B+, which drops them clear down here. And a student who take, and I'm, there's absolutely nothing wrong with this, but they take general ed and they're not taking those advanced courses and they're, I just feel like they may bump out someone who has worked their butt out off and they're just like a couple points shy of that title.
That's why the AP and the honors and all that are at a five-point and a 3.5 scale instead of a regular four-point scale.
Okay.
It's to not do that.
So, I guess where I am in my mind, um, I honestly don't know how I feel about this yet.
Yeah.
And, um, as a result of that, I, if I don't know how I feel, I don't know that I, well, I know I can't give a yes vote tonight. So, my question is, um, what's the rush? Can we wait a month, because it's not gonna change anything, because kids are still in school, and give time for community, because now this is out there for the community to talk to us and allow the community to digest this as well?
Sure.
So, I can't say I'm against it, but I can't say I'm for it. I just would like a little more time.
And is there a possibility for a hybrid?
Absolutely.
I also have a suggestion. If we're gonna wait a month, is there any way we could pull in some of these students and get their input?
Yeah, absolutely.
That might be in that top 25 to just say, hey, I don't know. I see Mr. Tan wants to say something really bad.
I know. Go ahead. I just know, my kid's number six. She would be one of those kids. So, that's what I'm gonna tell you. So that's what I'm going to tell you right now. My kid's number six in the class. I got her transcript last week. She would be a valedictorian if you did the new system, but it doesn't mean anything. She's not number one. That's what I'm saying, so.
Well, what, you know, no one's talked about the impact of college credit plus. That's a huge impact. Several years ago, our valedictorian did not take, she took all her courses at the high state university. So that's out there too. So keep that in mind, as, as those become more prevalent, more, you know, more readily available kids are taking advantage of them, that has a huge impact on this. So when you're making your decision, kind of keep that in mind too.
So.
Are we, are we supposed to, is this something that we are supposed to? We'll have to break this apart if we're not.
We will have to break this apart.
Can we make a motion to table?
Oh yeah, I might want to, I'm trying to think of, because there's a motion on table right now. So you could either do a friendly, or you basically withdraw your motion.
Could someone with?
You could withdraw your motions and we start over again? Or you can amend the motion to ask for it to be pulled out for a separate vote.
Yeah, that's, or I, I think we make an amendment to pull it out, and then we can, we can make a motion to table.
Yep.
So that's two separate motions. Get that.
Yeah, the first one is to pull it out, amendment.
I'll make a motion to pull out seven B to vote on separately.
I'll second that.
So point of order. Are we now supposed to talk about cameras so we can vote on A and B and, or A and C and then go back to the motion to table? Or do we motion to table now?
No, right now you want to split it out. And then it's not part of this vote, so you go ahead and we vote on the, basically the policies and the cameras. And then we would come down to the next item, which would be the policies, the policy, but this change, and then you can table at that point.
So we don't want to talk about.
Yeah, this is amendment to pull, amendment to pull it out. This is a vote on the amendment.
This is a vote to pull out seven B.
As a separate vote.
And when it's done, if it's approved, then what's on the table will be seven A and seven C.
Correct.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure we were clear. Any other questions? Mr. Jones?
Mrs. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Vincent?
Yes.
Mrs. Engel?
Yes.
Mrs. Spindler?
Yes.
Okay, that has been pulled out. We can now begin discussion on seven A and seven C.
So we talked about seven?
What'd you say?
Now we're on cameras.
Now we're on cameras.
This one is basically budget purposes for the new intermediate and the new high school. We only installed half the number of cameras that it could do, it could hold. The recording device itself was built for the full, so it has the space for all the cameras, but to save money, we didn't purchase all the cameras at the same time, because, you know, the intermediate was two million dollars of our budget. So basically with these, with the ester funds, and we have additional monies, you know, Dr. Perkins and, and basically Jeff over there have worked out the quotes to get the remaining cameras. So the intermediate school and the high school will have a full complement of cameras if you approve this, paid from the federal ester funds. Can I add, Jeff?
Bring up seven, thank you, sir.
How soon would these be online?
I, I can't really speak to the vendor. I know when we talked about this at the beginning of summer, he told me it's probably about a month or two. I don't know how this schedule's changed, but I'm going to guess it's a more timeframe. They have to get the cameras ordered, installed, set up, and.
Okay.
I guess what was that?
And while this is a pretty significant expenditure, I, given the last week or so, I think it's a necessary purchase.
Well, we're not putting them in bathrooms.
We are not. We're being very clear on that.
That's right.
I wanted to make sure that was said out loud.
Yeah, just to speak on that, you cannot put cameras inside the bathrooms.
Oh, we put them right outside the bathrooms.
Right outside the bathrooms is totally acceptable, correct?
Unfortunately, those are some of the cameras we reduce to the elementary building before buying, or finding that.
Maybe that's where we need to add them?
Yep.
Okay.
Okay. Wait, are we actually a four, five, two?
That's what it's four or five, they're immediately basically, I mean, the, the spots are there, the wiring's there, just the camera's not there. So all it is is a plug, and it's ready to go.
It's not wired at all with a camera, so it was, it let us save a pretty good amount
of money on the circuit.
Perfect, good.
Okay.
Add those in.
Exactly. Any questions?
So this is a vote on seven A and seven C.
Okay. Mr. Jones, call the roll, please.
Mrs. Moore?
Yes.
Mrs. Spindler?
Yes.
Mrs. Engel?
Yes.
Mr. Vincent?
Yes. That passes. We now have business item seven B, addendum to high school student handbook.
And I'm going to motion to table.
I'll second that.
Okay. One of the other things, I know that we said we're going to reach out to kids, I think that I would also, and I know that universities and colleges is not going to be for everybody in our district, but I want to get a flavor of what the, the effect that this change would have for those kids that are heading to a university, college. Is it a benefit? Is it negative? Give me, give me out everything you can on that.
Okay. Mr. Jones, this is motion to table.
Table, yep, seven B. Mrs. Moore?
Yes.
Mrs. Engel?
Yes.
Mrs. Spindler?
Yes.
Mr. Vincent?
Yes, that is table. We'll just talk about that later. Treasures items, I believe we can take all of them?
Yep.
Motion to approve A, A through E.
Second.
Just the first item is donation, so thank you, everybody who has made a donation to this school district. We appreciate it.
B, statement of purpose, again, as these come in, we'll bring them to the board to approve various activity accounts. C is our actual permanent appropriations, estimated receipts for FY twenty-two. Kind of amended earlier, usually they come into October. I still need to work on getting the estimates in. That should be ready for next month for the financial consent counters, so you'll be able to see where we're running at for year to date, so that's always a good thing. D is transfers. These are transfers, the permanent payment to pay various cops and tax anticipation notes of debt, as well as our half mil limitation required, maintenance requirement for the high school facilities project. And then again, the other five hundred thousand is transfer as a contingency fund for construction or other needs. These are all very routine, we've been doing them fairly regularly. And then, then now certificate, we have ones that, the now certificate, which is basically timing, getting the invoice and the PO in place, so.
Okay. Any questions? Mr. Jones, please.
Mrs. Engel?
Yes.
Mrs. Spindler?
Yes.
Mrs. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Vincent?
Yes, that passes. We now have super detailed items. Dr. Perkins?
So the first thing I want to talk about tonight, and I'm actually going to defer to Mr. Tanczewski and Ms. Lattowitz, we sent a small group out to the Cavelli Center to tour it, to check out the facilities, to kind of look how that would all work. So mostly very, very good, but I do want them to kind of tell you where we're at in the process. It's just a tiny hiccup, so I don't know if she wants to speak. Hands getting up, okay?
Tiny. I don't want to hear hiccups.
Uh, yeah, we paid them a visit yesterday. I, I mean, it's an excellent facility. The location is easy to get to. Still have some questions. Primarily, the, the two biggest questions we have is the ability where we would gather kids and stage the graduates to be able to get them onto the floor. Right now, they're telling us that it, we, a, a large portion of them may have to be staged outside and come through a, a, you know, an interior hallway and then come through. My biggest question was the actual total amount of seats available for families. Once the floor is set up, a set of bleachers is pushed back, and how much access we have. So what they're going to do is they're going to put together a, a, a formal proposal and a quote, and submit it to Dr. Perkins here in the next week or so. Something that was of even more concern is ADA accessibility ramp. We, we wanted to have one, but they told us if, they, they have one, and if it was committed to the Schottenstein Center at that time, in order for them to get us another one, it'd be an additional seven thousand dollars.
Wait a minute, how does a center like this not have an ADA?
And how do they say that we don't have it when that's, that's?
It's new.
The Ohio State University.
It's a new place, right?
You can't believe Ohio State doesn't have the money.
That's crazy.
That's what they said.
Oh, and they, they said they were checked to see if they.
They would, they would check on the availability.
We have to have that.
We told them we had to have that.
That's a no.
Uh, and additionally, they would charge.
Let's bring one from our school.
They have to have that.
Do we have one we can just bring with?
I.
Yeah, on a school bus.
I'm serious.
I should have let Mrs. Lattowitz talk.
I think that is one of the most ridiculous things.
Additionally, though, what?
Uh, in addition, uh, they will be charging ten dollars per car.
I knew it.
So that's where we are on, on, on that. So we went, I mean, there's, there's positives and obviously there's negatives. So they'll get us the information. Again, my biggest concern was the seating, the availability. We wanted to have about, you know, be able to give about six, six tickets per, per family.
Right.
I mean, so we're going to wait on that.
Do, how many would they get?
I don't know. That's what I don't know. That's what I wanted her to, uh, once they set it up, I wanted her to set us an exact, give us an exact number of seats available for families.
Yeah, they gave us numbers, but I don't know if they were really configuring how it was all going to work, which is why they went out. I mean, it's important we do that to make sure.
Well, because I assume we put a stage one in, just like if we were to do it in our gym, our new gym, you would have a whole block of chairs not available because the stage would be there.
We, we tried to take pictures, but they had volleyball practice in there, and they wouldn't let us, because of the athletes.
Okay.
Yeah. But I mean, it's, it's, it, it would be tremendous if we could do it. I mean, it's, you look above it, and there would be seating above it, there's bleachers pulled out, the stage, so it's a, it's a bowl, it's great. They would have, but also they would be selling concessions.
Oh, that's nice.
Oh yeah, let me get up while my kids are seeing.
Hey, I went to Xavier. Listen, I went to Xavier graduation, and they sold concessions. It's not a bad thing. Absolutely.
Well, for them, it's not, of course not.
Listen, graduation is a long time. It's a, it's a long time. Sometimes you need some popcorn.
So we'll come back to everybody. We haven't signed a contract.
Have you signed a contract yet?
Oh, we haven't signed a contract.
Listen, we have to have it inside.
And, and they were only willing anyways to do a one-year contract. If we do enter into one and we give it a try, they'll only do a one year, because they don't know how it's going to be. We have to see seating first, that's, and we have to figure out the ramp.
We have to do seating, we have to figure out the ramp. With the price we're paying.
Plus ten dollars a car.
I'm annoyed by the, the parking real, that's a no, that's like a definite for me, like, I'm really not happy with that.
For me, it's the ADA ramp.
Well, I mean, yes, that's an issue, but, you know, these kids have gone to school for thirteen years, and we're going to charge for park?
No, I don't think we are.
I know we aren't, but I'm saying, the venue we've selected is going to charge for parking. I have a problem with that.
They're gonna, no, they're gonna charge us for parking. So we bring, you know, twelve hundred cars there.
Yes.
That's, you know, a hundred and twenty extra thousand dollars.
No, 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 they're charging the people.
People coming there will pay.
Oh, really?
Like you roll in and you pay.
So I, I feel like they're using.
I'm thinking it's just extra money on our tab.
I feel as if we're being used for money. I mean, they're selling concessions, they're charging for parking.
They're not doing it out of the goodness of their heart.
Right. I mean, maybe we could ju- just go to Walt Disney World, because they do all that. I, I don't know. It's frustrating to hear, so.
Yeah, so, so we're kind of like, so, you know, the initial excitement was fizzling a little, so we'll just have to see where, where we're at. We'll, we'll come back and talk about it. Look at, look at all the, look at all the, you know, because the, the other thing is we, we can have graduation stadium, and it is very nice.
Oh, but it's miserable.
There are negatives to that as well, though, especially the weather. And what people don't remember is that we have had years where it has rained all the way. And people are like, we'll have a rain day. Well, how many rain weekends do we want to have? I mean, at some point, we got to have graduation, so. And that's the worst case scenario I'm presenting, obviously.
And it's a lot, we do have expenses with that, too, with the chair rental and the audio rental.
Yeah, we brought audio into do it.
If it rains out, we're paying for that rain out day and the new rain day, so.
We're just going to have to weigh the pros and cons once we have a better picture. The tickets, though, if we can't provide, I mean, we've got to have at least a substantial amount of tickets. That was the whole point of going to the exterior.
The point of going there is to provide.
If we can't do that, then to me, we're back to the drawing board. We may have to go one more year in the stadium and continue to look. But again, understanding, we have been, I mean, really, really trying to find a place. This is not like the first place we call. A lot of people are just not interested. So in other good news, um, next week I'm going to find some good things as well.
I'm hoping you're serious about other good news.
No, I wasn't. I did want to just touch on briefly the, the TikTok challenge, the vandalism to the buildings. Obviously, you know, Mrs. Lattowitz put out a statement to our families, you know, we're taking this very seriously. We are, kids will be disciplined. If they do vandalize our building, charges will be filed. So these are, you know, this is our new facilities that this community worked very hard to make happen. It's very disheartening what's going on. You know, my one small, tiny peace of mind is that it's, it's not just here, it's not like this is just Watkins Kids, it's a nationwide problem, but it needs to stop here, because this is our district and, and our schools, and what they're doing is, is unacceptable. So the high school team is working very hard to determine who is doing it, and then we'll proceed forward with the discipline. So that's not a fun topic, but it needs to be said for those watching at home, or those in the audience, or those who share with their family and friends, because we're not going to continue to allow that behavior to go on.
I just thought of this. I, I appreciated Mrs. Lattowitz's email. Is it possible we could have Mr. Ball send something similar out to the middle school parents?
Yeah, do you think you could share that with Mr. Ball?
You could copy and paste, because I think there's, just judging by what I'm seeing on social media, there's a lot of like, oh my goodness, I can't believe this is happening. And then all people say it's happening at the middle school, too.
It is.
And it is, and I know that's being talked about a little bit less because the building is old, but that doesn't matter. You can't destroy our property. And kids have, you need to have an opportunity to use a nice restroom with soap dispensers and working toilets and sinks, so, you know, regardless of what building. So yes, Mr. Ball can put that out. And then to, to give another accolade to Ms. Lattowitz, I did appreciate the see something, say something anonymous, you know, line that they put in for kids, because I think oftentimes kids are leery to come forward and say things, because that doesn't always work out well for them. And so this is an opportunity for kids to do the right thing without having to feel like, you know, they're going to be targeted for doing the right thing. So I, I really like that as well.
Would a, I don't, I don't know, you know, not that you want to necessarily throw money at things, but would a minimal reward be helpful for anything?
Right, right now, I feel like you're making headway, don't you think?
Are, you're making, are you making headway?